Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Leonard.
Here.
Councilman Papescu, Mayor Rigsby.
Here.
And Councilman Duvors absent. Thank you.
So we have a quorum. We had a closed session. We have a report from our illustrious city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council has been in closed session. Three items listed on the agenda, two real property matters where a report and direction was given to the city's negotiators. No action to report at this time. The third item was a conference with labor negotiator with the groups listed. Again, there was a report given, and formal action on those groups' contracts is before you as item number three I on the agenda, and there's no further report beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Our next item is the invocation of pledge of allegiance led for the second meeting in a row by the mayor. Please stand. Additional or deletional items?
No, sir.
Would the public, all two or three, depending on how you count them, like to make a comment? None? Okay. Our consent calendar is the first numbered item. There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Oh, I see it. Yeah, I've got a simple question.
Okay.
On the number one, the demands register. I know there's got to be a simple answer to this, but in going through it, and I don't always go through it line by line, but occasionally, there are many entries for Southern California Edison. And I've always kind of looked at the gas company, and Edison is kissing cousins. They're both utilities. And yet I could only find two entries for gas company. I'm just curious. Why do we get billed, by my count, nineteen times by the electrical company?
Yes, I can answer that. Majority is Public Works. The big one is for the sixth well that we have to pump the water from the ground up to the reservoir. That's a big ticket items. That's from Edison. Also, every traffic signal have a meter for electrical.
Ah.
Every junction for the street light have electrical meters, and same thing with the irrigation. So yes, there's a lot of meters.
So each street light has their own meter?
No, they have a string of them. Like ten of them per one meters.
Okay.
And so therefore, you know, like one across the street, there'd be two, one here, one to the south.
Okay. So I can imagine what the demands register for Los Angeles looks like.
Yes. The gas, we only have a couple of buildings that have used gas.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, that makes sense.
But they don't get Edison. They get LA Department of Water and Power. So, yeah. Looks different.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's proceed with the vote. Is that the final discussion? Okay. Is there anyone opposed to the consent calendar? Hearing no opposition unanimously. Okay, you can ask it in arrears, and we reserve the right to reverse our vote.
So I assume this will be directed to Conrad, where it says that this is a temporary allocation of money, right?
That's correct.
And the LLCCP, I never figured quite what that was, is in negotiations to transfer operations off LLCCP. In the interim, there's a requirement for technical support. Why are, why are we, what's the change that's occurring and why?
So this is, that's the, the City Fiber Optic System is the LLCCP. Most of our hardware is getting very dangerously close to end of life, so we're looking for somebody to take over those operations and bring in the upgraded and new functional hardware. And on top of that, providing that service is a fairly high level and high skill level job. And with the way we've cut back on staff and everything, to have those type of guys on staff for essentially what isn't a full-time piece, and then we have to downgrade their skills where we can get less expensive people to do the same job.
Yeah.
It just doesn't make, doesn't make sense for us. So we're looking at.
So are these technical assist functions that already are being covered just by people that have more horsepower? I'm still trying to understand what's happening.
We've been doing this for several months already. This is just the last month or two of the, probably the last year or so.
So we're in the process of upgrading and the equipment?
We're in the process of shifting that to somebody else. We will continue to own the fiber, the physical fiber in the ground and the conduit.
Yeah.
But the electronics will be shifted to somebody else who will operate them. And then, yes, those are fairly high horsepower people that are able to work those.
I don't have any objection to it. I just didn't understand it. And the fiber optic, we haven't heard much about that for a while. Are they continuing to lay fiber optic, and how much utilization is it getting from businesses?
From businesses, from the businesses we pass, we have a fairly high, fairly high utilization rate. We also provide the residential piece where we have, in the newer construction areas, a really high utilization rate and also what's called a real high sticky rate, where we have a customer and they tend to stay with us for a very long time. The amount that we're laying is only in new construction areas. So the new houses off of California Street will have that. But we're not building anything into the existing area that for us and for our small footprint, it's cost prohibitive. Hopefully, with a larger organization that can take that over and fold this into providing a larger scope of service would be a different story. So then we can expand into the older neighborhoods.
And I recall we had the ex-secretary of, what was it, Energy or Commerce or something in here, along with entrepreneurial friend.
Norman Manetta.
Yeah, that was it. And we had an interesting discussion with him. Has anything come of that?
That is the group that we originally tried to work with to have them take that over. We could not come to an agreement with them just as far as the scope and the shape of that agreement. So we're working with an organization called Electric Lightwave. They do the similar thing, and actually, they operate smaller community operations in Indian Wells, La Quinta, other fairly affluent and high-end areas in Southern California that have their own private fiber optic networks for their communities.
And I haven't been asked this question recently, but over the years, a number of times, and that is, I'm not sure what we mean by newer developments, but current residents that have lived here for a while, do they have any, can they anticipate having fiber optic access at any point, or is that the part that's too cost prohibitive?
That's, that's the part that's prohibitive. At any point is a long timeframe, but in the foreseeable future, no.
Okay.
Essentially, anything that was built after 2004 and is being built into the future is being serviced.
Okay. Thank you. That was interesting.
Okay, new business, Adam III, joint meeting of the city council and housing authority, which I'm calling into order regarding our budget.
Mr. Mayor. Oops. Mr. Mayor. On the housing authority agenda, there was one other closed-session item that I don't think I referenced in my report.
Then please do.
That was also a real property negotiation where direction was given, report received, and no final action. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager and Finance Director, who is the presenter for the budget?
That will be Diana to present the, this next fiscal year proposed budget.
Mayor, council members, we have the annual presentation of our proposed budget for fiscal year 2017-18.
Excuse me. Can we have the PA turned up? Usually I can hear my voice, and I can't hear Diana's.
Can you hear me?
Everybody's but.
The light's not on.
Mine's working.
Hello?
Mine is not.
Can you hear me?
I don't think mine's working. I'm sure this is driving our viewers crazy.
Yes, our many viewers.
Perhaps they already have been.
There are people who'd pay money for that. I'll note for the record that we have suddenly increased attendance from the Budget Committee. Thank you for coming.
Okay. I don't know if you can hear me now?
Yeah, much better, much better.
Okay. So we have our proposed budget. Again, we present it as the general fund by itself, then the city as a whole, and then we just briefly go over the housing authority. We start off with our, this is our proposed ending balance for the current year and for proposed fiscal year 1718. So we anticipate to end the current budget year with unassigned of 5.1 million, assigned of 1.25 million, and then committed of 5.5 million. So we will have a total of the $11.8 million in fund balance in the general fund. With the proposed budget that we have, you have before you, we're proposing that we will have unassigned fund balance of still 1.1, but we will be adding about $48,000 to the fund balance. We still have assigned of 1.25 million and committed of 5.5 million. So we anticipate ending the year at 11.9 million. This will take, we start off, our assigned and our committed are funds that we have set aside, that we don't touch for operational purposes. The assigned is basically for equipment replacement that we're setting aside to build up our equipment replacement fund, and the committed is basically our rainy day fund, which can only be used in an emergency, that is a declared emergency with the Act of City Council to adopt a resolution to allow us to use the committed funds. So with the proposed budget, we are anticipating to have revenues and resources of 19.5 million, expenditure of 19.4 million. So we will be ending with the unassigned of 5.16 million. These are our top seven revenue sources for the general fund. Sales tax has generally been our top revenue source. It is higher now that we have the agreement with Mansfield, but we do have an economic incentive agreement with them, so there is an offsetting expenditure for the sales tax. So we anticipate being close to $7 million this year. Our motor vehicle in Lufi, which is basically a swap for actual property tax, is at 2 million. We have administrative overhead of 1.8 million, property taxes of close to 1.4 million, refuse is at 1.1 million. We have the law enforcement contract with the Loma Linda University Medical Center for $900,023. And then we have franchise fees, which are close to 900,000. So we have, anticipate a total of 19.5 million for the current, for the next year's budget.
Diana, quick question. The MVL fees, which is, you said it was in lieu of property tax?
Well, it's the motor vehicle in lieu of property. We get property tax. Before, it used to be on the car registrations, but back in 2005, when the governor, Governor Sworson did all the, like the triple flip, he also did the swap for motor vehicle license registration. So we actually end up getting property tax instead of this, the motor vehicle registration.
So then, is it accurate to say that technically, property taxes end up being 3.3 million dollars? If you combine the actual property tax and MVL?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And the growth on the motor vehicle is based upon the increase in assessed valuations.
That's interesting. Okay.
I'm not sure if it's easy for you if we ask questions as you go, or you'd prefer us to hold them until the end?
No, I don't mind you asking them as we go. That's fine.
Okay. I'm a little surprised that sales tax is very nominal increase from last year to next year. And I'm curious about that because we've added businesses, particularly a hotel, and I would have thought, as well as other smaller businesses, I would think that that would impact.
The hotel actually does not generate a sales tax. We get TOT tax, which is the transient occupancy tax from them on their rooms. It's a tax on their room.
Yeah, where is that reflected in?
It's, it's not presented here because it's not one of the top seven. So it's in the total, but it's not presented here. It's the top seven.
So as we, as we add hotels, then theoretically, that's going to go up and make the top seven?
Make it to the top seven, yes.
Okay, but it is a tax.
It is a tax, and we have seen, we are seeing an increase in that.
Okay.
But tho, those sales tax figures, assuming that we're bringing in $700 million of sales, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, I'm not complaining. I've just thought I'd see a little more increase.
Yeah. Well, part of that's because of just conservative budgeting.
Well, we do.
We can put it overly optimistic, and then we'd end up with a deficit.
That's a better way to.
We do have a consultant that provides us with sales tax information, and they, they do pretty accurate. They're within 1% difference of projecting our sales tax. So, and they are projecting actually for a drop in motor vehicle fuel tax.
Because gasoline prices.
Okay, the other line item that surprised me was law enforcement is decreasing. I'm not quite sure I understand that. I thought we were increasing.
There, I think some, there was something in the current year contract that for this year, it was slightly higher. I'm not sure if it was a startup fee of some.
This is only for the university?
Yeah.
And this year?
So this is not the law enforcement?
No, sir. This is the revenue that the university pays us to provide law enforcement services to the hospital.
And that's the single full-time deputy?
Not even full-time, three-quarter of the time.
Three-quarter time that is on the premises for them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But I'm still not sure why it'd be decreasing.
It's because it's not, this year, this first year, have a startup fee for vehicles, for equipment, and so forth, but we don't have that for next year.
Okay, okay.
Sir, and if you look at the booklet, have a detailed line item for all the, the other, beyond the top seven of all the revenues, including TOT.
Yeah. Which booklet were you showing me? The overall budget? This one?
In your budget booklet?
Yeah. Yeah, no, I've been, I've even got two of them. Thank you, Diana.
So here are the general fund expenditures, and we put them in categories. So administration, the general government, police services, community development, fire department, and public works. We are seeing a decrease in overall, most of the administrative, for admin, we, let's see. We are seeing a drop of $35,000. And that was just basically, I believe that was for a vehicle purchase in the current year, so next year, we won't have that purchase. General government, we see the drop of 29%, which is a lower insurance premiums for the general government. We will see an increase, if you look at the, the fire department, there is an increase in fire due to claims related to fire activity. So you'll see an offset increase in fires.
So that's what this increase represents?
Well, the decrease in general government, yes. The increase in fire, it is insurance and personnel.
Now, we're going to have to make some capital investments as this new medical center continues to evolve, and we've talked about that. So that'll be subsequent years, we'll see large increases there as well, I'm assuming.
Correct, for capital purchases.
Right.
What's increasing for personnel and the fire?
We, we, we are having the COLA increase, so that's put into the budget. So that will be increased, and I believe they, you are filling some positions.
Okay. So it looks like it's about 500,000 a year?
Correct.
Right? Am I reading that correctly?
623.
How many positions are we adding?
I don't believe we're adding positions. We're just filling positions.
Yeah, they were positions that had been unfilled. I think there's four there, and there had been some overtime staffing, so we're just putting regular personnel in those spots.
Does there's a chance when it's all said and done, it may not be a 10% increase?
Well.
Because your budget.
My understanding, the biggest piece of that is that, that risk management piece, that liability piece. We'll see a smoothing of that. If you've seen over, like the flood, we're seeing that peak right now. That's out of the way. So you remember, we made the move to move those risk management assignments to departments, I don't know, two or three years ago, rather than just general government. So the fact that this particular risk management fee is, is going to be fire-based versus the flood, our department will see that increase. So we'll see a smoothing out of that at, I don't know if that's.
So that's seeing the flip between general government.
Yes, this has to do with the incident that happened when the firemen get executed, when they hit the power line.
Electric.
Sorry. Electric.
The, now, one of the issues that I am tracking, that I get concerned about, is when I, you know, I'm looking for some kind of parity, and if there isn't parity, then there'd be some explanation. So when I see public works is down 9% and fire is up 10%,
I, I.
rather than for me to speculate, I'd like to hear what the.
The bulk of the public works were vehicle purchases in the current year, so there won't be those repeat capital purchases in next year's budget.
Okay, okay, so those are vehicles we're going to purchase?
We have already purchased those vehicles in the current year, so next year, we won't have that expenditure.
And, yes, we purchased it, it appealed this fiscal year, and it turned out that it might not get here by the end of this week. So I might have to do some reappropriate for, at the next meeting, to reappropriate some money from this fiscal year to next fiscal year for those vehicles that we already created purchase order.
So overall, the expenses dropped by 0.6%?
Yep, slight decrease.
Between the two fiscal years?
You'll see the increase in community development, and that's to correspond with development activity that we anticipate for next year, and it'll be for the building inspector's contract. So we've, we've put the revenue in there, and we have the offsetting expenditure here.
And again, are those increases related to the big new building we're putting up, or?
Not the medical center. It is mainly residential development and multi-housing development and the new hotels.
Okay.
And the, like I said, the decrease in general government, that is for the insurance. Then we have, because of the drop in fuel, the economic incentive, then we had a claim and judgment, and then the contribution to the Ronald McDonald House that happened last year also came out of this general government. So that's our decrease in, so we anticipate to end with expenditures of 19.4 million. Okay, so overall, we're starting off with 11.8 million, and basically, we're, we're adding revenues of 19.5 and expenditures of 19.4, and we're ending at 11.9. So again, we're adding about 48,900 to our general fund balance.
And remind me again, if we go back a year ago, and we went through this, we anticipated back then that we'd have a deficit of 200,000 or so?
No, we were at mid-year, we were.
For this fiscal year, yes.
No, but, no, no, but when we're at this point, 12 months ago, and we're looking at the same slide, didn't it show? It was a deficit, I just.
It was a deficit of 754,000?
At, at the mid-year.
But then, but.
At the beginning of the year, it's always a balanced budget.
Yeah, I, that's the point I'm trying to make, is that initially, it showed a deficit. I don't, I don't remember it seeing 700,000, though. That seems like a lot.
I think you, you're probably right. It was higher than that.
No, I didn't remember being that high.
Yes, what we did was we have to get the money out of reserve to start purchasing the equipment.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying that, that what we saw last year at this time, and then if we fast-forward it to where we ended up, it turned out to be a huge difference.
Correct. And that's because the prior year, we actually added fund balance. After the audit was complete, we ended up adding like about 800,000.
Correct.
And so that lowered our deficit.
So I guess where I'm getting at is, if we're going to have this conversation again in 12 months, that number may very well be much larger. Not as big as last year, but.
It could, yes. There were some one-time.
True, true. Very unique situation.
The triple flip finalized, so we got about 700,000 in that year. Yeah.
Anyway, I think it is remarkable. I think when I came on board, it was about 6 million fund balance, and now it keeps increasing, so.
Correct. So we're going over to the city as a whole, and we anticipate ending the current fiscal year with 33.8 million. Next year, we're planning on having revenues of 42.1 million, and then expenditures of 36 million. So we're planning on ending the year with 39.9 million. The bulk of the revenues that we'll see coming in will be for capital projects, so there'll be development impact fees coming into specific accounts, our restricted use accounts, for just capital improvements throughout the city to meet the needs of those projects. We already went over the general fund, and so the sewer fund, we're anticipating revenues of 4.4 million, and that's a combination of rate increases that will go into effect, and then consumption. Portion of the sewer charges are based upon consumption, so with water reductions, we've seen drops in some of the revenue, although we've had rate increases. The Loma Linda connected communities, we're seeing increases in their commercial connections, so we do have a contract with the VA to provide fiber to the VA, so we are seeing revenues for those coming in. Water, again, it's a combination of, we do have rate increases that have been adopted, and the consumption usage. So again, with the conservation, we have seen some consumption coming, coming back, but not as, as, I guess, as it, to the level that it was previous to the drought. So again, capital funds will be our major increase, and those, again, will be from development impact piece coming for residential that is being planned, multi-housing, and the hotels. So we'll see those increase. And other funds are generally like our measure I, our grant funds and stuff, so that's what we'll see for the other funds.
Now, the, I mean, you've addressed this a bit, but the capital funds, uh, again, that's so profound, I just wanna be sure I understand it.
Correct.
What, what capital?
It's, it's a revenue. For example, when the, for the thirty-five lot subdivision, they had to pay sewer, uh, mitigation fee, traffic mitigation fee, storm drain, water, so that all add up. And, and we have, the hospital's supposed to be eventually paying part of it this next fiscal year. We have the apartment down on Van Leuven, that's gonna be paying for next fiscal year.
About the hotels?
The hotel also, the hotel down on Redlands Boulevard. So it's add up, because there's so many different funding sort. But, but again, for storm drain, can only be used for storm drain improvement, and water can only be used for water improvement, so forth.
Yeah, okay.
And so we have expenditures, um, I'll start with sewer, we're seeing a drop. Again, the drop has, is attributed to capital purchase, that was in the current year, which won't be happening in the next year. The LLC CP fund is generally operations, um, there were some capital infrastructure that was replaced this year for servers, um, that won't happen again in the next fiscal year. And then we have the water fund, uh, there is an increase in water, there are some projects anticipated for the water. It, it's a combination, we did do the refinancing of the bonds, and so we are seeing a reduction in debt service for the bonds, but, uh, and insurance, but we will be seeing, um, increases in some capital facility for repairs and maintenance, um, some contractual services, and some capital purchases in the water fund. For capital funds, these are our infrastructure projects that will be taking place.
And I, I will go over that at the next, uh, items for the five-year CIP, we'll go over the capital projects.
And then in other funds, we are seeing a reduction, we'll see a reduction in the AQD grant and the CDBG expenditures for the next year. So again, this is just a summary of the overall change in fund balance for the city as a whole, and we will be adding six million point one, and the bulk of it is, will be coming from the capital funds. And then we just have the housing authority, um, the activity going on in the housing authority as far as revenues are repayment of mortgages that, for houses that the city is holding, um, and then just the operations as far as contractual agreements, legal, and, um, any improvements to houses that may be in the city's inventory. So that's pretty much the operation, it's status quo kinda, so. So again, in conclusion, we are proposing, uh, the unassigned as five point one million, the assigned as one point two five million, the committed as five point five, for a total of eleven point nine million in the general fund. And as always, we're pretty conservative with our revenue projections, and we're pretty careful with our proposed expenditures. We try to, you know, co- do the combination of meeting the needs of the community and, um, being conservative on expenditures.
Good job.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions of staff? We have a, uh, written analysis of the budget from the Budget Committee along with recommendations, I'm sure you've all read that. And I have a question in that, uh, of the staff regarding that report, there's a suggestion to do a multi-year budgeting process. Is that something that we feel is even possible to do, given that the revenue projections are only provided to us for one year? How would we do that?
Excuse me. Um, we can project out, and then what would happen is that we approach the second year, we would do a mid-year correction to, to come more in line with whatever revenue projections, but we, we could do it. The only, I, I do wanna put this caveat, is right now, our accounting system, we will be going, we're gonna be upgrading our accounting system, so I would ask that we kinda hold off till we get up and running, and then go ahead and implement that.
I, I, the reason I want to carefully look at two years, uh, budget is, one good thing is, is less work for us, but the, 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 the bad part is, is hard to project the expenditures when we don't know about the expenditure for the person increase. And, and, and we, even though I tried, we did that at the, at the workshop. And we also, the next three year will be okay, because if the city council approved the, uh, the, um, the agreement with all the labor group, then we have the number for next three years, but after that, we don't know. So, so, and I want to do a big adjustment every year, might as well just do every year budget, and with the planning, like what we did this year, we actually planned out five years, we, we can do that. But I prefer that we do just one year budget, even though it's more work for, for us, is, I have the accurate, more accurate numbers to present, both, in both expenditures and the revenue. So that's, that's my only reason.
Is there gonna be a presentation of the, uh, from the Budget Committee? I mean, I've got a number of questions, but I think if they were gonna do a presentation, I'd like to hear that first.
You've, yeah, what's your pleasure on that? Uh, you've given us a written report, and we've read it. I guess you could stand for, you could stand for questions if nothing else.
Yeah, instead of just reading it, um, if, if you guys read it, I'll answer some, uh, questions or anything that you had, that, what our thought processes were, or, or anything else.
So go ahead with your questions.
Okay. Gotta be able to read it first. One, one of the things that I wanted to ask about is, uh, the, the tone of the, particularly the opening observations, um, uh, when there's a comment that, uh, we can now reposition Loma Linda back towards the category of a well-run city, that implies that it hasn't been run so well more recent years. Do you believe that, or, and if so, can you be a little more specific than that?
That's in direct.
And then there's another, just if I can add, I'll go to bullet two, the first, uh, sentence. This year, the committee has greater concerns on increasing recurring costs.
Yes.
So if you can kinda look at the two of those, cause that, you know, my interpretation of that is an implication that we haven't been doing so good with it, and you'd like to see us do better. So, may, but maybe I'm misinterpreting what's being said there.
Well, putting Loma Linda back in a well-run city was last year that we actually, when we presented, we were in a deficit situation, which was the first time, uh, for twenty years that I've been probably doing this.
But we didn't end in a deficit situation.
We didn't know that then.
Sure.
So, at that particular time, uh, we were behind the eight ball, let's say, and through, uh, hard work and, and a lot of adjusting, they were able to, uh, change that. However, again, coming back to the, the, when we first proposed last year's, we were in a deficit situation. That was part of it. The large issue that we had was, if we were going to continue with the expense, expenditures, we would be in the, in that particular deficit with projected revenues. So we positioned it back towards a better, uh, uh, well-run city, in that we're now at least back to a balanced or a better bu- uh, budget, uh, where we had been for many years before. So that's, 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 that's reference for that. For increasing recurring costs, that's one of the, probably, an item that is always an issue for the last twenty years. Uh, the city, and like many other cities, always have issues with, uh, compensation, uh, for retirement, uh, compensations, everything else. These are all reoccurring costs that happen, and they have a tendency to grow over time. However, since that's more of a, uh, a projected c- a cost, revenues aren't that easy to project. And so either you have to go out and get something that produces revenue, and if it's a one-time shot, it only lasts a little while. So our, our concerns are, uh, there's a lot of things that we are seeing that's coming down, uh, that's gonna increase, uh, the overhead to the city, and nothing in its place to really replace it for the revenue. So that's, that's our concerns.
And so given the, the budget report that we just heard, do you feel like, uh, what's being projected, uh, for next year as compared with this year would meet the standard that you're describing in that, uh, second bullet?
Um, the budget is, is balanced, uh, so the projected expenditures and projected revenue are balancing it out. Uh, again, to see ten years out, I, it'd be a little bit harder to say, but if you were to say, say with, uh, revenue being the way it is, and expenditures the way we're seeing them, uh, in five, six years, uh, you can run the curves to it and say that there might be an imbalance. And so we would like to see, uh, a more concern about either trying to make sure that these expenditures are kept under, under control. In other words, don't, don't be so easy to agree to, uh, costs that are gonna be reoccurring, uh, rather than one-time costs. And, uh, because of that, uh, revenue uncertainty that you, that, that we always have here in Loma Linda, uh, so.
And I agree with you, I guess my question is, do you feel that the numbers we're looking at in the seventeen, eighteen budget, uh, are achieving that, and I recognize it's only a single-year projection out?
Well, we think a, a multi-year budget would help.
I understand.
And, and so that helps clarify a little bit, that you could see, see it a little bit better.
Yeah.
Uh, however, referring to this year's budget, um, with the only things that we're kinda referring to in, in ours is if, uh, the transfer of some of the, uh, 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 accounts for the fund balances from, from the unassigned to the assigned and, uh, and committed, is, uh, a projection of trying to take care of some of those future costs for capital, for vehicles, and for the rainy day to continue to keep, uh, keep that going.
Yeah, no, I read that, that's a little further down. In the one, two, third, uh, bullet, um, basically, you talk about the increases that we anticipate from law enforcement services, and, uh, suggest that we, that the city council will have to adjust city services to account for those increases. In other words, to find the balance.
There's, there's always that issue as, as these overhead costs that are reoccurring and invariably, uh, growing, either you have to find revenue, or you have to adjust services.
Yeah, agreed.
So it, it's that balance.
And do you feel that this budget comes up short in achieving that outcome?
No, because it's, it's, it's being balanced right now, so I, I.
I just don't want citizens to get concerned when they say, we're gonna have to start, we have more police service, and, and there's higher costs that are associated with that.
Well, with that, if we go back a couple of years, city had to cut, uh, the police services to, to make it balanced. So, uh, that is, that's also an option, option, is that you can get, actually get rid of those expenditures by getting rid of the services.
No, and I, I understand the concept, but my question is, are you concerned? Cause this implies you're concerned that those added recurring costs are, are going to impact the budget in such a way that the city council may need to, uh, track it and potentially adjust other services if we're gonna sustain the increased police presence in the city?
In the long run, it probably could happen.
Okay, but in this budget that we're talking about for next year, do you see that as a potential problem?
No, we're just laying out the, uh, concerns, uh, for the future.
As we project further into the future, okay.
Jay, I had a question, and maybe Diane could help me with this, but if we go back about six years ago, do you recall what our general fund budget was? I'm gonna say between fifteen to sixteen million. And, and I'm just trying to think from memory.
How long ago?
About six years ago.
Six years ago was. During the crisis of two thousand eighty was around.
Yeah, but that wasn't six years ago.
Thirteen, it dropped, it dropped from fifteen to around thirteen or twelve. Yeah.
Thirteen was the lowest, but six years ago was around fifteen, I think, yeah, okay. Well, and I'm, I don't know, maybe you're looking at it this way, and I wanted to get your take on it. So, and we'll just kinda throw it out there, let's say six years ago, it was fifteen. Fast forward sixty, six years later, now our revenue is nineteen, which means that we've increased revenue by almost four million dollars. So is it your view that if we weren't increasing expenses by as much, maybe our reserves could have been even bigger?
Well, mathematically, yeah.
Yeah, it's almost like, no sooner do we have increased revenue, we're also have increased expenses.
Uh, that's what, what you've done, is if you go back to what you guys did before, was we're automatically, when recession started to hit, we were automatically gonna be upside down very quickly.
No, I know, I'm not worried about that.
And, and, but let me, let me finish. So when you dropped it down to where it equaled, you kept it pretty well even, as revenue comes up, you replace stuff, your revenue comes up and replace stuff. That's how we're kinda viewing it, and you've kinda kept that balance. Uh, when you had some extra, you did put it into, uh, the, the general fund for, for the rainy day and for, uh, uh, the vehicle replacement stuff. So, uh, that, again, is part of our sustainability concept, is that not only are you going to be looking at these reoccurring costs coming in, but you have a, a, an overlay of a bunch of other expensive, uh, infrastructure and ca- and vehicles that you're gonna have to account for. And if you're not also putting more stuff away for those items, then you're spending today's dollars on, uh, uh, which have to be spent tomorrow. And so you, you have been keeping the balance, and we're very happy with that, because as you can see, the, the, those funds have increased a bit, and almost every city would be envious of those, of those balances. Cause they just don't have it, because they could, could not get down to the level of expenditures equaling, uh, in- income at that time.
And I agree with you, but I, I, there's no doubt about it, and I mean, ultimately, we're responsible for, but, but we could be doing better. Because one of the things that caught my attention was the fact that we've increased revenue substantially in the last few years, our population hasn't increased, but yet we've also increased expenses.
There's a lot of that.
And it could have been that some of it was delayed.
There's a lot of delay.
That we had to go ahead and pony up, but it would be nice that if we can increase revenue by that amount, we shouldn't have to increase expenses by equal amount, where every year, we're always budgeting just so we can show a little bit of a surplus.
Only, only if you believe that you don't have an unfunded or, uh, uh, for capital, capital stuff.
Yeah.
Your bridges, your roads.
But I, 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 I agree with all your concerns. Clearly, we need to anticipate, and the economy's not gonna be growing forever. We could see a significant decrease in revenue, maybe three, four years, and then we'd be having the same conversation that we had back in two thousand and eight, where what are we doing to maintain our sustainability?
But if, if the sustainability is also, in, in good times, if you're doing the sustainability part, then the downturns won't be as bad, because you'll have that stuff funded for, for when you need it. So it's not a double whammy to you at that time.
Thank you.
If we go down to the next bullet, there's, I'm, just so you can keep up with me, one, two, three, fourth bullet. And so as not to read the whole thing, I'm just cherry picking a few pieces out of it. Uh, you note that there's additional housing moving into Loma Linda, and that housing, quote, "housing does not pay for itself." As a result, the Budget Committee notices that additional pressure on city services will ultimately result. Okay, no question about that. Again, concerns of the Budget Committee are new and increasing expenditures being offset against uncertain revenue. Um, when you say, "housing does not pay for itself," Um, when you say, "Housing does not pay for itself," and you're concerned that revenue provides the needed infrastructure for a new housing development, I'm assuming that the planning process ensures that we do have the revenue to handle that project. So, when you say, "Housing does not pay for itself," I'm needing a little help understanding that.
Um, there's a influx of money when, when the projects are first built, and that produces some income to the city. After that, it just basically puts off on, uh, uh, tax revenue from, from the property taxes. That property taxes, when it's offset against fire and, and, um, police services and other additional services that the city has to provide, they do not come up to that. That's, that was one of the reasons why Proposition V was put into place, because at that time, they were seeing a lot of houses being built without an additional infrastructures that were part of that. So, uh, every city is, always has these problems of, you build a bunch of rooftops trying to attract businesses, but the rooftops themselves don't pay the city for it, unless you can get enough, uh, retail or something else in to pay for it. And that's always been the equation. If you just build houses, then that doesn't pay for what you need for the houses because you need the retail to come in, or something else to come in to make up that difference.
Yeah, and it especially doesn't pay the bill if the property tax increment goes to the former RDA, which is paying off its debts. So, for, for years to come, decades to come, there will be no net increase in property tax revenue for all this new construction for our city. So, there's nothing to pay for police and fire.
So, I'm hearing that you share the same concern?
Yeah, it's always been a concern, that, that housing absent business, uh, is a cost to a city. And all of those formulas assume, like he said, that there will be business come with it, and it doesn't necessarily happen.
And if you may recall, all of us, I don't know if you attended, but when we got on the council, we all attended the conference up in Sacramento. In fact, I'm pretty sure you attended it as well, because remember, you gave us a report. And I remember the slide very clearly. Of course, Jay and I actually were aware of it because we were dealing with development fights back in two thousand and five. And I remember that slide. It was so vivid. It showed there's three types of development. Apartments, and the amount of the expenses they caused and the revenue, it was like this. Housing is almost break even, and the only development in the city that actually showed revenue increase with the decreased expenses was commercial retail. But in the end, anything that's housing, in the long run, is going to cost the city more money, so...
Okay, then my question would be probably to the city manager. Does our general plan take that into account so that we don't just build housing developments and become a bedroom community without, with inadequate, uh, support from businesses to make it affordable? And, and...
Let me get that.
I, I'm not looking for a quick answer, but...
Actually, through development impact fees, we take into account the infrastructure costs. And in the general plan and, and the, through the use of zoning, we set aside commercial areas and sub parts, parts that are not usable for housing. So, we have areas set aside that are designated for commercial use to generate that. And part of the general plan is to look at that sustainability. Um, so, obviously, we don't want to convert commercial into residential, and we want to preserve those areas. And that's kind of what we're doing along Redlands Boulevard and the Barton Road corridor now. So, there, there is a thought to that. No, we don't want to be a complete bedroom community, but we also want to have the, the resources, the infrastructure to support the housing. We don't want to become a city of industry with twenty-seven residents, or whatever they have.
And, and so, we do that through zoning, basically.
Yes, through zoning and general plan.
And we feel we've got to balance zoning that will balance, uh, address the issue that Jay's raising of have, have adequate infrastructure support for the development, the housing developments that come in.
Correct. When we do the general plan update, which we have to do every, I believe, eight years, along with the housing element, that addresses the built infrastructure, um, the city resources, peripherally, our financial ability to, to support that, as well as our housing needs going into the future. And then, the product of that general plan is the zoning map that we have.
Okay.
To kind of, uh, add to Conrad's, uh, speech there is that when you do the zoning, it only covers, uh, the infrastructure for, uh, a certain area. For example, if we were to put a high-rise apartment in the middle of, of Barton, it could only cover the, the widening of the road for only a certain part of it, not for the whole road. And so, we run into these little problems that, of impact in which, uh, uh, they only cover, you can't make them cover another mistake in the city when you're going to widen the road. You can't make the whole, they can't cover everything. So, when we talk about the infrastructure, it's only limited to a certain, a certain area of impact, not with it was going to impact the whole city. They can't make them pay for that, so...
Actually, the development impact fees cover that. And with Measure V, we're, especially with traffic and, uh, street infrastructure, you're required to address your impacts throughout the city. So, if you build something conce, if you build a high-rise building here next to City Hall, you will probably be addressing traffic impacts all the way down Mountain View and on the ramp. So, there, the, those do get pushed throughout the entire impact area of the project.
But only for the level of, uh, traffic, right? Going from a C D or D or whatever?
Uh, well, they, they also have to upgrade sewer and water to be commensurate, so they have to bring that into the, into that project and address their, their downstream impacts.
And water?
It, just like, just like traffic, downstream impacts.
Uh, because that was one of the issues that we had that, that time. And so far, we haven't run into a situation in which we can't get the water for any, any project, right?
We have not. And Measure, Measure V kind of lays out a process for that, which is part of the general plan.
And looking at the budget, and I'm looking at your recommendations now, and as the mayor already touched on, you're, you know, one of the key recommendations through this is multi-year budget. And, um, and since we looked at a window of five years this year, not from this point five years, but looking at how we've, I assume that's beginning to address some of the issues you were, you were, uh, recommending.
Yes, there's a little bit of dovetail concept in which if you're doing mul, multi-year planning, uh, you can kind of take advantage of making concerns for sustainability, uh, in the, in those particular budgets.
Yeah, okay, good. Yeah, a couple of bullets down. You, you, you had some things in here that I didn't quite follow, uh, regarding the rainy day fund and moving money out of one general fund unassigned and, uh, moving a million of that into assigned and so forth. Uh, what were you trying to accomplish with that?
It's part of the sustainability, uh, concept, again, is that if we take, uh, and it's, again, semi-cosmetic in its design, but also it shows intent, is if you take some out of the unassigned and put it into the assigned for vehicle or committed for the rainy day fund, you're committing something for the future that has a little bit of stopgap rather than just being in the unassigned.
So, defining the use of the money and holding to that is what you're basically...
Yes, because we're about seven million dollars upside down on, I think, the cap, fully capitalization of the, uh, uh, vehicle fund. And so, that's something that, uh, we had suggested, I think, last year. It was like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year or something to try and maintain it. If you put, uh, money in, then you're either prepaying it, or you're just trying to catch up to it.
Mr. City Manager, you have any comments?
That's fine, that's fine with us. And, and with the, uh, committed fund, it required majority of the council to vote on what, what you need to spend the money on.
Yes, yes. So, we'll have to bring, to move money into the committed, we'll have to bring back a resolution that you guys will adopt. And then, in order to use that money, it has to be a declared emergency with your resolution to authorize us to touch the money.
I don't know if anybody else has feelings about that, but it seems reasonable to me.
See, what happened is with the labor, sometime, they think that we have a lot of money in, in, on the sign, uh, reserve. They just think, "Oh, we should use that to pay the salary," and I said, "No." But, but if you put in the committed, I said, "Hey, that can only be used for emergency only," and, and...
Okay. Okay, that's, those are my questions. You did a very thorough job. I appreciate that.
Thank you guys for reading it this time.
Take your, uh...
We read it every year.
Yeah, uh, take our thanks and appreciation back to your committee for a job well done.
There's some out there...
Yeah, is there a minority report from Miller and Cook?
We used to have those.
You're good, okay. We, we believe that the vehicle fund, uh, is, would probably do better if there was a, a formal policy on how that would be handled.
A revolving fund, instead of just cash flowing it every year and letting it sit there in the reserve fund?
Yeah, something that is kind of, uh, a little bit of guidelines for, uh, the city, uh, staff and also for the, the council itself to kind of see something there. That would be the, uh, one of the things that we would like to see, is that kind of a little bit more formalized on that. Not that you guys had, would have to do something, but that would be your, your overall plans that you would like to do, again, addressing the susten, sustainability.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you for that.
Good job.
Thank you.
We have our CIP. This is Jarbs Cookie Jar.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like every year, we present the, uh, the five-year CIP that lists the, what we plan for the next five years for seven different category, which is the fleet, the general building, parks, sewer, storm drain, street, and street light and water system. And, and this is the planning document, so what we plan to do for the next five year. But what we budget for next fiscal year is what we plan to do, and that was budgeted in this fiscal year. In, in this report is provide the, um, introduction for the money that be, to be used for different, uh, category. And it provide the category for, for where the money coming from, which is potential funding source, and the summary of different category. What I have a PowerPoint on tonight is, is only going to focus on what we did this current fiscal year and what we plan to do for the next fiscal year. So, if you look at the, the board here, in, in green is the park improvement. This current fiscal year, what we did was, we installed the, um, the restroom building at the Hoda Crooks Park, that what we did with, and, and also, we did improvement at the Heritage Park on the north side of Mission Road. For storm drain system, this current year, we installed the, uh, the storm drain at the end of Benton, all the way to the San Mateo Channel. And they will prevent the flooding over at Academy. If you remember, a couple of years ago, there's a water that, that come out, a storm drain at the end of Benton, go over the, the open channel, and come out about at the El Madigna Park and flood the intersection of Redlands, I mean, uh, Anderson and Academy. So, by installing the storm drain system, the, the water, the majority of the water will go north underneath the railroad track and, and into the, the county flood control that was completed this year. For street improvement, we paved the Anderson Street from Court Street to Stewart Street. We also paved in front of City Hall here. And we extended the left turn pocket on Barton Road at Mountain View and at the, uh, Loma Linda Drive.
May I ask a question about...
Yes, sir.
In terms of Loma Linda Drive, uh, I've had, not only Loma Linda Drive, what's it? Can't hear me? Um, the, uh, I've had a number of people complain for actually a long time now that there's so much street parking in Loma Linda that it's becoming problematic, and Loma Linda Drive is one of them that they mentioned. Now, I, my assumption is that when the lot behind us gets developed, that there will be fees that'll cover a street widening there, or what's...
Well, there'd be feet, feet, wind the road, but does not mitigate the, the parking situation. Because the idea is, hopefully, when the, when the, the hospital completed the, the parking structure at, at Anderson and, and, uh, and Barton Road there. So, hopefully, there will, and after construction completed for the, uh, the new hospital, then the patient and employee can park at that new parking structures. So, they'll prevent the, the, the vehicle from parking out in the street.
Yeah, and I, I understand that. Those are for the cars that are parked on Lotton because that gets pretty tight now sometimes, especially with some of these big wide pickups. But I've had, I've had several people talk with me about Loma Linda Drive here, too. Are people parking out on the street in such numbers because there's insufficient parking?
On East Campus, yes.
On East Campus?
Yes.
Is that our fault, or...
No, because, because right now, the parking, the, the parking lot that used to be used for the East Campus is now the parking structure, and part of it is handicapped parking. So, the, uh, so the employees...
What, what structure are you talking about?
Parking structure. The new, the, the, under construction right now.
F M O.
Yeah, F M O. I'm talking about right here, just to City Hall.
So, so the parking moved from F M O to the East Campus, and the East Campus now moving to Loma Linda Drive and the property back here.
Yeah, well, that's, that's part of the reason why some citizens were objecting to the Planning Commission, the city council approving additional amenities and structures and, and operating rooms on the East Campus. So, there were some complaints about that from the citizenry. And, um, part of the news on that is that the operating rooms that were planned are no longer planned to be put in, so there will be some relief.
But even in here?
On East Campus. They were planning two new operating rooms, which would increase the amount of people coming in for surgeries and parking, so that will not be occurring. But I don't see anything in plan that, but part of the problem that I see on Loma Linda Drive is that you put the stripe right down the middle, and all the parking's on one side. So, I suggested and was, was roundly wrapped on the knuckles that you can't do that, that we put the stripe off-center, so there's the same amount of room to drive on both sides. That would have been better, but it's apparently not allowed.
So, the Loma Linda Drive, it appears, will be widened once we collect fees on the development of the east side?
No, no, so when the property back here is developed, it'd be, it'd be part of condition of approval for them to widen the road.
For who?
The Stewart family.
Oh, 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 oh. And they would be widening the road?
They will condition, they'd be conditioned to widen the road, yes.
Okay, okay.
The problem is, whatever goes there has its own demand on that same space, too, you know?
Sure, yeah. No, I understand.
But it should have its own onsite parking.
And I hadn't frankly heard much about this, but people are so frustrated with the congestion up Lotton that now they're also complaining about this and asking me why we permitted, uh, all these facilities to go up when there's inadequate parking. That's their view, and I need to know what to tell them, because it looks that way to me as well.
This is primarily a repercussion of the F M O parking lot, because everybody...
You think so?
Everybody bumps down a little bit. So, you take out the F M O, they move Ronald McDonald. The guys that are Ronald McDonald move a little east, so everybody moves one slot over.
Okay, so if we can project that out, when, when, uh, F M O occupies their new parking facility, that's going to decrease parking on Loma Linda Drive?
Everybody should slide back to where they, they are, because this primarily picked up when that, when the F M O...
But that, that won't happen until twenty twenty-one or so because they're using that parking garage for the construction personnel.
Uh, the construction is in excess of the need. So, the, the lot itself, without the construction, should meet the need for the F M O. And though, they will be overparked between the medical center and the F M O and campus by a couple of hundred slots. So, construction is, is in addition to.
So, if I understood what you said, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, the, the new parking facility, uh, in front of the F M O is going to be a staging area for construction of the new hospital?
Uh, the top floors of it, yes. The bottom floors will be used for patient parking. And that will, the first floor will not even replace the surface parking that was there. The second floor will slightly... The second floor will slightly increase. So there will be better parking situation once they move in than there was prior to the construction. So that should relieve the congestion on Lawton, should relieve the congestion running up and down, um, you know, just the pedestrian congestion running up and down Anderson. And like he said, I think there's a little bit of a buffer zone, a residential buffer zone in between. So I'm not sure that there's a direct domino effect all the way to Loma Linda Drive, but the, the point is well made that the institution, a lot of the, a lot of the services have really stacked up on the East Campus and there's a need for parking there. And the, the, the medical center slash university complex has always had adequate parking. It's just been mal-distributed in the town. So they've fixed part of that with shuttle buses and uh, I don't think it's all fixable until there's a, enough need for a parking structure on East Campus.
And is there any discussion of that?
None.
Yeah, I'm guessing uh, the billions we're going to raise for the medical center are sucking up any resources?
Yeah, currently the, the fact that they built that huge parking structure on the FMO parking lot was in excess of what was deemed to be needed.
Yeah.
And it was a freebie that they took and used because half of the cost of that parking structure would have been spent parking the construction personnel and busing them in and paying them their salaries while they're being bused into the construction site. So half of that building was for free, so they built it.
So when is that bridge going in?
The bridge will have to go in to get the construction guys across. So I think it's, they haven't even put in a proposal, have they?
Oh, yes, they have.
They got the full design?
They have the full design. The problem is they have a transmission line on the north side of the street that had to deal with Edison, so to lower the transmission power line on the north side to go down underneath where the bridge is going to go and to come back up.
Their, their plan is to have FMO parking sometime in late August, early September and then the bridge and the upstairs, because they have some elevator issues, um, February of March next year. So they're on a fairly fast timeline because they need to get the people into there.
Yeah, cause I was going to say the construction people are going to have to go walk up to Anderson to get across to where they go to work.
Correct. So they're, they're looking to get, and we've had discussions with them and give them as much latitude as possible to open as much of the FMO lot early and then finish out the elevators and the bridge on a follow-on, just so we can get the parking out of, out of the streets.
So to come back to the original question, all of this is to say eventually the parking on Loma Linda Drive will be less intense?
We, we hope so, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so back to this, uh, this fiscal year, we replaced the wall line down on Rosarita, Yodlee, San Mateo. And after we complete all that pipeline replacement, we grind and overlay the street. So next fiscal year, we plan to come back and finish the last two street over here, which is the San Mateo, San Lucas and San Juan Drive. And then after that, we will grind and overlay the street over here. Also, we plan to replace the existing wall line down on Huron from Lawton to Pecan. And that's for, for this fiscal year, I mean for next fiscal year. Also for the pavement we have, we plan to do a pavement survey seal on the subdivision south of Mission Road. This, this project was built in, in two thousand four, two thousand five, two thousand six, so it's been over eleven years old. We're also working with Caltrans and IDDA to help funding the widening of the I-ten and Mountain View off-ramp. We're also still working on the widening of California Street at Redlands Boulevard. So that will be for next fiscal year.
When are the Mountain View on ramp, off ramps, when is that supposed to happen?
Next fiscal year. Hopefully by, go out to bid in, in December. Whereas it's going to cost about one point five million dollars, uh, one million will be paid for by Caltrans and the city will pay two hundred and fifty thousand and IDDA to pay for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that.
And, and we believe that'll improve the congestion at that, at those intercept, at that intersection?
Yes, yes. And nothing from Redlands or, or San Bernardino. I did ask. So for the next five years, uh...
Good, that's good. We need to give the mayor credit. He sits on the, uh, it used to be Sandbag, I don't even know what it's called anymore, but appreciate you following him.
It's still called Sandbag, but only the cog function, council of governments, the rest is called Sabukta.
But thank you for pressing that.
And this is planned for the next five year, again, is only a planning document. We will do as, as much as we have money available for, for street and water and so forth. Any question?
And we're still proceeding with uh, changing out light bulbs on the streetlights?
Oh, yes, yes, that's routine, yes.
But I mean, we're changing to the high energy efficient. When one of the old ones goes out, then we...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, um, are we going to have budget a half an hour for each one of these lettered items or are things going to accelerate a bit? That's a rhetorical question because it would take too much time to answer.
Can we just move the rest? The meat of the budget is approved, I don't know, do we need to have separate motion for each item?
Yeah, it's my question too.
No, you could move the entire budget, including the uh, items A through L as listed, including the resolutions and uh, items set forth in the agenda?
I will go ahead and do so with, at the pleasure of the mayor.
Please.
Second.
So there's a motion, a second to approve whatever items need approving.
Annual budget plus all the subsequent, um...
Yes, items A through L.
And having said that, I do have a question about an item.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, please ask your question.
Just on item number G, there's a number of contracts for various services, um, and it seems like a lot of them are extensions. Do we have a policy about maybe rebidding, trying to get it cheaper's or what has transpired on that?
Yes, what, all of this project has, had, went out to bid.
Okay.
And we have a three-year contracts or, or three-year with additional option of one, two-year extension. So this is all, all it went out to bid.
I, so all three of those are extensions are in the middle of their three-year contract?
With the exception of number, number four, which is the, this company does the, the sale tax.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? This is such a big item, I'm going to go with uh, something other than a lack of opposition. So those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. That's unanimously approved. Are there any reports of councilmen? Any reports of officers?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and the council, I would like to thank you, my staff. Uh, we, we work with every department head on, on each line items and Diana and Sonia helped with the preparation of the budget and meet with the budget committee. This year, Conrad helped me with negotiation with three out of five groups with the labor negotiation and it went very well. So I'd like to thank you, the staff, for helping me establish this task.
We thank you and your staff as well, um, for putting this together. The budget committee, we thank you for your service. The city council has no further items, then we will adjourn the city council and move to finish off the housing authority agenda. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Uh, there is the consent calendar. For a motion?
And a minute, so consent, oh, consent calendar.
It's part of the consent calendar. Okay, there's a motion, a second, any further discussion, any opposition, hearing none, it's approved. The new business was already taken care of along with the city council agenda. Any member reports, any reports of officers, hearing none, that is adjourned. Our next meeting is the successor agency to the RDA. Any items to be added or deleted? Is there any motion on the consent calendar?
Move it.
Okay, there's a motion, I heard two motions, so one is a second. Uh, any opposition, hearing none, that's approved and we are adjourned. That is the end of the agendas for tonight. Thank you all for coming. We hope you're rewarded duly for your attendance by great interest.